Stand for the flag, suit.
Sunshine notice, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners' public meeting agenda for Tuesday, January twenty first, two thousand and twenty five. The time is now seven oh five. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter two thirty one, Public Law nineteen seventy five, notice of this meeting was published in the November twenty first, two thousand and twenty four issues of the Nutley Sun, the Herald News, and the Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board, and a copy is on file in the municipal clerk's office. Commissioner Evans.
Here.
Commissioner Tucci.
Here.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Here.
Commissioner Petrakko. Mayor Kelly.
Present.
All present, Mayor.
Thank you. Minutes, please?
Yes, we have Board of Commissioner meeting minutes for December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty four.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko. Mayor Kelly.
Aye. Communications, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, so we have several this evening. The Nutley Music Boosters Association has submitted a letter to request permission to hold a raffle on Sunday, March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty five, at three hundred Franklin Avenue. The township has received three applications for social affair permit as follows. All three are from the Nutley Elks Lodge. One is for a paint and sip for Saturday, February thirteenth, from six P M. to twelve P M. with a raid date of Thursday, February twentieth, two thousand and twenty five. The second one is also for the Nutley Elks Lodge. It's their annual Saint Patrick's Day Parade Celebration on Saturday, March first, two thousand and twenty five, from nine A M. to eleven P M. And the last one is for a cancer fundraiser for Sunday, March thirtieth, two thousand and twenty five, from noon till six P M. And all three events will be located at two forty two Chestnut Street. Motion, please.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko. Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
And that's it for communications, Mayor.
Thank you. Moving on to bills, please.
Bill list for January twenty first, two thousand and twenty five. Public Affairs, five hundred and fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars and forty-one cents. Revenue and Finance, six million, three hundred and forty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars and sixty-three cents. Public Safety, sixty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and forty cents. Public Works, thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and ninety-one dollars and thirty-eight cents. Parks and Public Property, one million, one hundred and seventy-six thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars and eighty-four cents. Water Utility, five hundred and twenty-one thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars and forty cents. Payroll as of January third, two thousand and twenty-fifth, regular payroll total, nine hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars and ninety-nine cents. Overtime payroll total, fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars and twenty-three cents. Total payroll, one million, thirty-three thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollars and twenty-two cents, for a grand total of nine million, seven hundred and thirty-five thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Move the bills.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko. Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
That's it for bills, Mayor.
Thank you. Moving on to public comment on agenda items only. This is public comment on agenda items only. People wishing to be heard on agenda items only, please approach the microphone and state your name for the record, please. Seeing none, moving on to Board of Commissioner announcements. Commissioner Evans?
Nothing for me.
Nothing, Mayor.
Yes, Mayor. We had a press release come out and an email announcement about our garbage can recycling program that's going to start this Saturday. It'll be every Saturday for ten weeks. We've divided the town up into ten sections. And people can go on the website and see the map to see where they fall. And we will be putting notices on the homes during the week prior to Saturdays. So that will start this Saturday, and we'll see how it goes.
Thank you. Commissioner Petrakko?
Yes, I'd just like to once again comment on these pedestrian crosswalks. We do enforce. I say it all the time. I can't say it enough. I can't teach people manners. If you see somebody in a crosswalk or going across, especially now, it could start earlier, please stop for them. One of the worst crosswalks in Nutley, in my opinion, is by the park over there on Center Street. Very difficult to see. People are passing on the right. I know myself from driving through town, I'm urging the residents who walk all these streets, especially at night, wear bright clothing. I can't tell you how many times, myself, I have almost gotten in an accident. Get on a scooter, you know, dressed all in black, or people walking. It's difficult to see. We have snow now. You know, so help us, help you. Dress in bright clothes, use a light at night, so forth and so on. Thank you, Mayor.
I have a couple of things to announce. We are, we have a number of events coming up this winter and spring in the Public Affairs and Health Department. But the, we'll start with some of the more, I guess, near-future events. We have, we're celebrating the Lunar New Year. This year is the Year of the Snake. Be on the lookout for more information pertaining to that event. Next month is Black History Month. We'll be having some events associated with that. And also, it's Heart Health Month. And on February eighth, we'll be doing our annual yoga event and walk through the park, followed by some axe throwing at the Axe House here in Nutley. And as we move into March, we have Women's History Month, and we have some health fairs coming up. So be on the lookout for more information regarding all of that, and we hope to see everyone there. Thank you. Moving on to public hearings. Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, thank you. I have two this evening. My first one, the purpose of this public hearing is we're seeking funding through the State of New Jersey under the Jake's Law Program in the amount of about five hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars and change. And this is a project, actually, it's at Glotzbach Park. There's an existing park there. But we will be installing an inclusive playground with all the equipment and all the features to ensure ADA compliance there. It's going to include accessible play structures, safety surfacing, ramps, sensory-friendly play areas, and pathways designed.
The biggest issue that citizens want to hear is always the cost, and if you could talk a little bit about that.
It's five hundred and thirty-six thou- Move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye. My second public hearing this evening in the amount of one million, two hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and ten dollars, also for Glot-
Bearing anyone wishing to be heard, matter, please approach the microphone and state your name for the record.
Close of public hearing?
Second. Solutions, Commissioner Evans?
Yes, I have a resolution tonight which it's fully referencing in Section one. The amount is for eight million dollars in notes to that, Section two, that it's a bond anticipation note that will be administered by the Chief Financial Officer. These would be notes that would be renewable annually. And that the budget impacts of this will be included in our budget each year. The first interest payment associated with this would be in two thousand and twenty-six, which would be covered by the lease agreement with seven, seven, seven. So won't affect the municipal budget. And for Section four, authorizes the Chief Financial Officer to move efficiently and quickly to get this done. And Section five, all actions heretofore taken by the township officials and professionals with regard to the sale and award of the notices hereby ratified, confirmed, adopted in Section six, this resolution shall take effect immediately, so move.
I need a second.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Stay in.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
My next resolution is for a refund of overpayment of tax charges in the amount of one thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars and fifty-three cents for the lot and blocks that are listed in the resolution, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
My next resolution is for the renewal of our grant writing services with Millennium Strategies for the year two thousand and twenty-five in the amount of forty-three thousand, two hundred dollars. Millennium has completed and submitted the business entity's disclosure certification, which certifies that said corporation has not made any reportable contributions to a political or candidate committee in the township of Nutley in the previous one year, and that all contracts will prohibit, and that the contracts will prohibit Millennium partners from making any reportable contributions through the term of the contract. Funds are available with the adoption of the two thousand and twenty-five budget, which will be certified by the Chief Financial Officer in account five oh one, two oh nine, two oh five. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, as follows. A contract shall be entered into between the Township of Nutley and Millennium Strategies, sixty Columbia Avenue, seat two thirty, for grant writing services for a rate of three thousand, six hundred dollars a month, for a total not to exceed forty-three thousand, two hundred dollars. Previous year contract was for forty-two thousand dollars. A copy of this resolution shall be published as required, and a law within ten days of its passage, and a copy of the resolution, as well the contract shall be placed on file with the municipal clerk, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
My last resolution is for the temporary appropriations ordinances. Whereas in accordance with N J S A forty-eight, colon, four dash twenty, in addition to temporary appropriations necessary for the prior period to the, prior to the adoption of the budget and the regular appropriations, the governing body may, by resolution, adopt a two-thirds vote of the full membership, make emergency temporary appropriations for any purposes for which appropriations may lawful, may lawfully be made for the period between the beginning of the current fiscal year and the date of the adoption. Whereas the amount such emergency appropriations shall be included under the correct headings in the budget. As adopted, the total of temporary appropriation for twenty-five includes eight million, eight hundred and thirty-two thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars and forty-five cents. Now therefore, by the Board of Commissioners, in accordance with N J S A forty-eight, colon, four dash twenty, an emergency temporary appropriation being the same is made for the accounts that are listed in here, which cover workman's compensation, payments to the employee retirement systems for both public employees, as well as police and fire, for a total amount of seven million, twenty-four thousand dollars, twenty-four thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars and fifty-eight cents, and temporary appropriations for the Passaic Valley Sewer Commission in the amount of one million, eight hundred and eight thousand, sixty-five dollars and eighty-seven cents, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye. Thank you, Commissioner Evans. Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, whereas the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection Green Acres Program provides grants and/or loans to municipal and county governments and grants to nonprofit organizations for assistance in the acquisition, development, and stewardship of lands for outdoor recreation and conservation purposes. And whereas the Township of Nutley desires to further the public interest by obtaining total funding in the amount of four hundred and two thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars and eighty-six cents in the form of a one hundred and thirty-four thousand, two hundred and eight dollar and twenty-nine cent matching grant, and if available, a zero, a zero-dollar loan from the state to fund the following project, Father Glotzbach Park Inclusive Playground Improvement, at a total cost of five hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifteen cents. Whereas the state shall determine if the application is complete in conformance with the scope and intent of the Urban Parks Initiative, and notify the applicant of the amount of funding award. And whereas the applicant is willing to use state funds in accordance with applicable policies and laws, and is willing to enter into an agreement with the state for the above-named project, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners, number one, that the mayor of the Township of Nutley, or successor to the office of mayor, is hereby authorized to, A, make application for such a loan and/or such a grant, B, provide additional application information and furnish such documents as may be required, C, act as the authorized correspondent of the above-named applicant, and two, in the event state funds are less than the total project cost specified above, the applicant has the balance of funding necessary to complete the project. Three, the applicant agrees to comply with all applicable federal, state, and local laws, rules, and regulations in its performance of the project. And four, this resolution shall take effect immediately. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
Whereas New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection Green Acres Program is providing grants to the Urban Parks Initiative. And whereas the Township of Nutley desires to further the public interest by obtaining Urban Parks Grant Funding in the amount of one million, two hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and ten dollars from the state to fund the following project, the Father Glotzbach Memorial Park Improvement Project at a total cost of one million, two ten, two, two hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and ten dollars. And whereas the Township of Nutley desires to obtain Greenacre Funding, if above Urban Parks Grant Funding Request is underfunded or unsuccessful, and whereas the state shall determine if the application is complete and in conformance with the scope and intent of the initiative, and notify the applicant of the amount of the funding award. And whereas the applicant is willing to use state funds in accordance with the applicable policies and laws, and is willing to enter into an agreement with the state for the above-named project, now therefore be it resolved by the Nutley Board of Commissioners that, one, the mayor of the township, or the successor to the office of mayor, is hereby authorized to, A, make application for such a loan or grant, B, provide additional application information and furnish such documents as may be required, and C, act as the authorized correspondent of the above-named applicant. Two, in the event state funds are less than the total project cost specified, the applicant has the balance of funding necessary to complete the project. Three, the applicant agrees to comply with all applicable federal, state, local laws, rules, regulations in its performance of the project, and four, this resolution shall take effect immediately. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
I'd like to consolidate the next three, and I'll read them as such. Whereas the Township of Nutley has a need to acquire specialized professional services as a fair and open contract pursuant to the provision of N J S A nineteen, colon, forty-four, A dash two point five. And whereas the Department of Parks and Public Property has determined that there is a need to acquire specialized professional services for air conditioning, heating, and refrigeration services, and purchase of materials and supplies, also for plumbing service and purchase of materials and equipment as necessary, and for roofing service and purchase of materials as necessary. And whereas the municipal clerk is hereby authorized and directed to advertise for all three of these items, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the sealed bid shall be due on Wednesday, February twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five, at eleven A M. Prevailing time, addressed Municipal Clerk, Nutley Township Hall, Long Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey, at which time they will be publicly open and read. I move all three resolutions.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
This is also a resolution authorizing an application for dugouts for the East Little League Floor Allowed and Park. Whereas the Township of Nutley desires to apply for and obtain a grant from the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs, local recreation improvement grant for approximately one hundred thousand dollars in order to enhance the recreational opportunities for our residents by supporting improvements to floor allowed in park, by replacing the current dugouts with new and improved enclosed baseball slash softball dugouts. Whereas the Township of Nutley does hereby authorize the application for such a grant, and recognizes and accepts that the department may offer lesser or a greater amount upon receipt of the grant agreement from the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs. And be it therefore resolved, if the Township of Nutley does further authorize the execution of any such grant agreements, and also upon receipt of the executed agreement from the department does further authorize the expenditure of funds pursuant to the terms of the agreement between the Township of Nutley and New Jersey Department of Community Affairs, and be it further resolved, that the persons whose names, titles, and signatures appear below are authorized to sign the application, and that they are the successors, and said titles are authorized to sign the agreement and any other documents necessary in conjunction therewith. The two people are John V. Kelly the Third, Mayor, Maro G. Tucci, Commissioner, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mr. Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mr. Petrakko.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
That's all I have.
Thank you, and thank you for moving the meeting along and consolidating those resolutions. Commissioner Scarpelli?
Thank you, Mayor. Be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the township clerk is hereby authorized to advertise for sealed bids for the two thousand and twenty-four C B G Prospect Street Intersection Improvement Project. The Township of Nutley will be received by the Board of Commissioners of the Commission Chambers Township Hall, Long Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey, on Wednesday, February twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five, at eleven A M. prevailing time, at which time they will be open and read. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Scarpelli. February twelfth will be a big day for bids. Commissioner Petrakko?
Yes, whereas the Township of Nutley currently owns a two thousand and three Ford E three fifty truck, which has been used as a hazmat vehicle in the Nutley Fire Department, whereas said vehicle is no longer needed by the Nutley Fire Department, and therefore pursuant to N J S A forty-eight dash eleven, the township desires to donate the said vehicle to the Nutley Board of Education for student-related activities. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the township is hereby authorized to donate a forementioned vehicle to the Nutley Board of Education effective immediately. I move it.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
The Township of Nutley currently owns a two thousand and twelve Ford F four fifty, which was acquired in the transition of moving the Nutley Emergency Rescue Squad under the umbrella of the Nutley Fire Department. And whereas the said vehicle is no longer needed by the Nutley Fire Department, and therefore pursuant N J S A forty-eight dash eleven, the township desires to donate said vehicles to the Bloomfield Fire Department. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the township is hereby authorized to donate the forementioned vehicle to the Bloomfield Fire Department effectively immediately. I move it.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
Whereas the Nutley Police Department Police Leo one, S Leo two, and S Leo three officers, Leo one officer is a volunteer who is trained to assist in the Nutley Police Department, including but not limited to traffic, crowd control, and civic events. The S Leo two officers and S Leo three officers have a full police powers while on duty. Whereas the Nutley Police Department has appointed Joseph Leon, Mike Lamborugo, as Leo two officers for one year beginning January first, two thousand and twenty-five, through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. Whereas the Nutley Police Department has appointed Joseph Castellano as a S Leo three officer for one year beginning January first, two thousand and twenty-five, through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. Whereas the Nutley Police Department has appointed Pragnish Rot and Rudolph Randolph, I'm sorry, a Pharaoh as Leo one officers for one year beginning January first, two thousand and twenty-five, through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. Now therefore it be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the Nutley Police Department is authorized to appoint Joseph Leon, Michael Lamborugo, as Leo two officers, Joseph Castellano as a S Leo three officer, Pragish Rot, and Randolph Pharaoh as Leo one officers for January first, two thousand and twenty-five, through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. I move it.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
Be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the township clerk is hereby authorized to advertise for sealed bids for surplus equipment that is no longer in use by the township. The equipment vehicles are listed below. Two thousand and four F five fifty, two-door pickup with cab, nineteen ninety-one Ford pickup, two-door pickup with generator. Be it further resolved, that the above vehicles will be available for inspection Wednesday, February fifth, two thousand and twenty-five, between the hours of eight-thirty and eleven-thirty. Contact the fire department at nine seven three two eight four four nine three seven. And if interested in inspecting the vehicle, be it further resolved, all bid submissions must be clearly marked sealed bid document with reference to which advertisement the bids are for. Be it further resolved, that the equipment will be sold as is and where is. And sealed bids are to be sent to Municipal Clerk's Office, Long Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey, Wednesday, February twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five, by eleven A M. Prevailing time, at which time they will be publicly open and read. I move it.
Second.
Commissioner Evans. Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mr. Petrakko.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
Okay, whereas pursuant to New Jersey Revised Statute thirty-eight A four dash four, two thousand and twenty-three, permanent or full-time employee who is a member of an organized military is ordered to active duty, that the individual is entitled to leave, to leave absence from his perspective, respective duties. And whereas the statute further provides that the employee is entitled to receive up to ninety workdays of pay per calendar without the loss of time for all days that the person is engaged in active military duty, inclusive of their vacation days. Whereas the police officer Vincent Santino Delaffaire was ordered to active duty at Picentary Arsenal as a member of the New Jersey National Guard, beginning December first, two thousand and twenty-four, through November thirty, two thousand and twenty-seven, and titling him to the compensation and benefits in accordance with the N J S A thirty-eight A four dash four. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley, County, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that Officer Vincent Santino Delaffaire received compensation and benefits contained to in N J S A thirty-eight A four dash four for the duration of his active service. Be it further resolved, that the Board of Commissioners has continuously supported our employees and veterans who have served or are serving in our military. We thank Officer Delaffaire for his service. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans. Commissioner Tucci. Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
I would like to thank Officer Delaffaire for his service to our nation, to our state, and to this town, and wish him a safe, safe mission, and we look forward to welcoming him back upon the completion of his deployment. I vote aye.
That's all I have, Mayor.
I have three on for this evening. I'll be tabling one, and I'll have a brief explanation as to why. The first one I have on for this evening is Resolution number nineteen twenty-five. Whereas raffle license applications have been received from the following organizations. Radcliffe School P T O and On Premises Fifty-Fifty Cash Raffle on Friday, February twenty-eighth, twenty-five. Nutley Music Boosters Association Off Premises Merchandise Raffle, Sunday, March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Friends of the Phoenix Center Foundation Casino Night, Friday, May second, two thousand and twenty-five. Friends of the Phoenix Center Foundation On Premises Fifty-Fifty Cash Raffle, Friday, May second, two thousand and twenty-five. Nutley Junior Raiders Booster Club On Premise Fifty-Fifty Cash Raffle, Saturday, February twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five. Nutley Junior Raiders Booster Club On Premise Merchandise Raffle, Saturday, February twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five. Nutley High School Crew Boosters Association On Premises Fifty-Fifty Raffle, Saturday, March eighth, two thousand and twenty, twenty, twenty-five. Nutley High School Crew Boosters Association On Premises Merchandise Raffle, Saturday, March eighth, two thousand and twenty, twenty, twenty-five. Nutley Youth Baseball Club On Premises Fifty-Fifty Cash Raffle, Saturday, April twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-five. Nutley Youth Baseball Club On Premises Merchandise Raffle, Saturday, April twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-five, with the license numbers written herein. Whereas the applications have been reviewed and approved by the municipal clerk and the police department, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley. of Nutley County, of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the aforementioned license are hereby approved, and the municipal clerk is authorized to issue said license. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans. Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco. Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
I will be tabling Resolution Number 2025, and we'll be reading it at the February 4th Commission Meeting, which will be held in this room on February 4th at 7:00 p.m. The reason being is we had some scheduling conflicts. We're trying to get clergy members from each of the different religious faiths associated with Four Chaplains Day. For those of you who don't know, Four Chaplains Day is a day designated to honor four United States military chaplains from four different faiths on their way to World War II, overseas to Europe. Their ship was struck by a torpedo and was sinking, and the panic, not all the crew members were able to have life jackets, and they calmed the crew through prayers and through their leadership, and they offered their life jackets to crew members who didn't have them, and they ended up perishing, but those crew members ended up, many of them survived because of their efforts. And so we're going to honor Four Chaplains Day on February 4th, and we look forward to that. The next one I have on for this evening is Resolution 2925, and this is the recognition of February is Black History Month. Whereas in 1776, people envisioned the United States as a new nation dedicated to the proposition stated in the Declaration of Independence that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Whereas in the face of injustices, people of goodwill and all races in the United States have distinguished themselves with commitment and noble ideals on which the United States was founded, and have fought courageously for the rights and freedom of African Americans and others. Whereas the contributions of African Americans from all walks of life throughout the history of the United States reflect the greatness of the United States, whereas many African Americans lived, toiled, and died in obscurity, never achieving the recognition those individuals deserved, yet paving the way for future generations to succeed. Whereas African Americans continue to serve the United States at the highest levels of business government and military, whereas the birthdays of Abraham Lincoln and Frederick Douglass inspired the creation of Negro Week, the precursor to Black History Month. Black History Month celebrated during the month of February or originated in 1926 when Dr. Carter G. Woodson set aside a special period in February to recognize the heritage and achievements of black people in the United States. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County, of Essex, State of New Jersey, join the citizens of Nutley to observe and honor Black History Month, recognizing the wealth and contributions made by African Americans. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco. Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
And the last resolution I have on for this evening is Resolution Number 3025. This is a resolution recognizing February as National Heart Health Month. Whereas February is American Heart Health Month, a time when all people, especially women, are encouraged to focus on their cardiovascular health. Whereas heart disease is very common, leading cause of death for men, women, and people of most racial and ethnic groups. When person dies every 33 seconds, some cardiovascular disease in the United States, someone has a heart attack every 40 seconds. Whereas about 1 in 20 adults aged 20 and older have coronary artery disease, and every year over 800,000 people in the United States have a heart attack. Whereas one out of every five deaths from cardiovascular disease was among adults younger than 65 years old, and about 1 in 5 heart attacks are silent. The damage is done, but the person is not aware of it. Whereas February is National Heart Health Month, and Friday, February 7th, 2025, has been designated as National Wear Red Day, at which time residents are encouraged to wear red to raise awareness about cardiovascular risks and disease. On this date, all township of Nutley Municipal buildings will be illuminated in red to bring awareness to this initiative. Whereas the Township of Nutley Department of Public Affairs, through its health department and American Heart Association, are committed to changing the future of health together by promoting healthy eating and fitness, and thus preventing heart disease through public and professional education about the risk factors. Now therefore it be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County, of Essex, State of New Jersey, that in recognition of the importance of the ongoing effort to prevent heart disease, we do hereby declare February 2025 as National Heart Health Month, and urge all citizens of Nutley to show their support for preventing heart disease by learning more about their heart health and eating a healthy diet, and maintaining a healthy active lifestyle. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco. Mayor Kelly.
And like I said earlier this evening, on Saturday, February 8th, we'll be having some heart healthy activities on that day. Stay tuned for locations and times. I vote aye. At this time, we'll open the meeting up to the public. Those wishing to address the Board, please approach the microphone, say your name for the record. Your comments will be limited to three minutes, and please address all comments to me, and I will, if appropriate, hand them to the appropriate commissioner.
My name is Linda Demora, 71 Lakeside Drive. The senior tax freeze, which I recently qualified for, I want to make sure that I understand it, you set a base level, and then after that, you're reimbursed if your taxes go up. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
And you have to establish your base year for a two-year period.
Base level, okay. So my question then is, now that the sewer charges are taken off your taxes and put on your water bill, if they were to remain on your taxes, that would be capped. Now that they're on your water bill, they're not. You're paying them, which, in my way of thinking, would create a hardship for people who are eligible for this freeze, senior citizens in Nutley. And I just wanted to know if anyone had thought that through, or if there's anything that would be done. I understand you are giving reimbursements for people who have pools or
Sprinklers.
The sprinkler systems, but what about your senior population that now this will impact? I want to stay in town, you know, but $600 or $800 a year on top of my water bill is tough now that I'm on a fixed income, so.
So, two couple of things. One, paying for the sewer as part of your property tax assessment.
Right.
Basically, it says that everybody, no matter what your usage is, right, it's just based, in effect, the cost coverage of use of the sewer system is basically grounded on the assessed value of your property, not your actual usage, not your actual burden. So in many cases throughout the town, that turned out to be a windfall for many and a burden for others. Most towns have a separate utility. Nutley just hasn't done it for a very long time. We just found ourselves in need to change to actually something that was, hopefully, distributing the bill more fairly. The expectation with seniors is that their water usage at a time is probably, or their sewer usage at a time is maybe lower or different, and they should not be, if they might have a higher property value, they shouldn't be subsidizing the usage of wastewater for a laundromat, a restaurant.
Understood, if that's the way it works, but I think that's a specious argument because, and I'll tell you why, the people who live next door to me, there's three adults living there, and we compared water bills and sewer bills when the new bills came in. Their water usage, because I do a lot of gardening, and I try to eat as much as I can, you know, through what I grow, I do not have a sprinkler system. I stand there with a hose. My water bill is much higher than theirs, so I am a single person, I'm paying much more for the sewer than three adults who are living next door who are showering, washing, you know, water usage, so.
Yeah, and that's an impact. Commissioner Scarpelli and I have been talking about ways of possibly addressing that, right? I don't, we don't have an answer yet, but we are looking at different things to make sure that at least the system itself is grounded in fairness.
Okay.
So whatever the consumption is, that's the consumption. And by the way, our sewer bill is a fixed bill. It's $4.3 million, you know, for the year. So the allocate, what we're talking about is the allocation of how we collect that money and where we collect it from. If we go around and say, everybody gets a break, right, or you start to give breaks along the way, it changes the formula on how much money you can collect, which has an impact on the rate.
I understand that. I understand. I'm just trying to.
I appreciate your question.
Yeah. I mean, people who have a nice built-in pool, and they have a sprinkler system, and now they're getting, you know, something back for this, and then you have a senior citizen who's just out there with their hose watering their garden, and it just, I don't know. I just wanted to, I had written to you, and I had spoken to you, Dr. Scarpelli, prior, back in September, because this concerned me as soon as I got my bill. I want to stay in Nutley. I've been here 40 years. I raised my daughter here. I'm very happy living here. I don't want to be priced out of my own home, you know, and it may not seem like a lot, $600 or $800, but now that I'm retiring and I'm going to be on a fixed income, every year, you know, that's going to go less and less far. So that $600 or $800 is enormous to me.
Yeah, so one of the things that we are tracking very, very closely is the state New Jersey program that should become part of the fiscal 26 state budget, which takes effect July 1st, 2025. But the expectation is, based upon what they've said, is that a new program will come out to assist folks that are 65 years or older with a greater discount on their property taxes, which the formula is pretty straightforward. If you earn less than a half a million dollars a year, you will get a break up to 50% of your property tax, up to $6,500.
I just read that tonight, yes.
Less if you're already getting frees and anchor, the net difference, so the maximum benefit. So, you know, one of the things we're looking at is the state's been trying to figure out a way for a long time, how to deal with the property tax issue.
Right.
And I'm.
Because it's impactful.
Oh, sure.
You know, it is.
I'm hoping that we'll be able to talk more about that in the coming months.
Okay.
Because the budget cycle is just getting.
Okay, I just wanted to make you aware of it because I'm really aware of it, you know, because it's impacting me directly.
I appreciate that.
So, all right, Mr. Evans, thank you very much.
I just want to, Commissioner Evans and I met actually last week. You know, this is, we're six months into this utility, and we kind of mirrored what most of the other municipalities were doing as far as the water and the pool discounts. We looked at that and said that maybe that's not the way we should be moving forward. So we're, as Commissioner Evans said, we're looking at some alternatives to what we can do. We haven't made any final decisions. You know, we're aware that the senior freeze, it's a little bit different because it's added to property tax, but those things we're all looking at, and, you know, again, as Commissioner Evans said, if you decrease the amount of money coming in, you got to raise the rate on everybody else. So it's a lot of things to consider. It's kind of in flux at this point until we get more data, and we're six months in. So we are obtaining more of that data, and we're going to change as we move forward, and hopefully it's what we expected, it's equitable and fair, and that's what we wanted right from the beginning.
I just think we tend to, and without getting off on a tangent, in this country, don't necessarily take care of our babies or our elderly the way maybe they would in.
Well, the fact that we have a senior freeze is certainly one way that we're protecting our elderly and helping them stay in town.
So if the people in the middle had to shoulder a little bit more of the burden, which I did, I've done for 40 years, you know, that may be what has to happen in order to protect your seniors, you know? And now that I'm there, it's like, of course, I would like to benefit from that because I want to stay here. You know, I don't want to have to move from my home.
I know your feeling.
You know, so, okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, and you do raise a very good point about seniors being priced out of their homes, and that's something that this entire board is laser-focused on, especially when it comes to our budget. We're, each, every one of us, I can say honestly, looks at our budget and looks for ways to keep our costs down, so that way no one has to get priced out of Nutley, because we want to keep everyone here.
It's scary.
Yeah.
So, all right, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. At the Shoreham 35 Wall Street, Nutley, New Jersey. Just want to stop by, give you guys an update. As you well wear, it's been over, well, over two years, and this has consumed my life that you don't even, can't even imagine. Sleepless nights, headaches, probably be part of the statistics with cardiac arrest, because it really, this is, you know, I have good days and bad days, and, you know, on the good days, I'm fine, and then I have a bad day, and, you know, I get a bill from my lawyer. It kind of is like antecedent of me coming here, when I got a deal with him, and I get a bill, it triggers me. So I'm not here to bash people. I never did, never will, very disappointed, most of you, not all of you, with exception, and disappointed not in an angry way, just disappointed that it's been over two years, and I'm no further ahead in this drama than I was over two years ago. Again, the house is more in debt, can't even tell you, it just compiles every month, paying this stupid ass loan, excuse my mouth, that I took out on the property, thinking it'll be paid three, four months, interest rates are high. Recently, you know, I just spoke to my wife, I said, I can't do it no more. I cannot pay the loan. I'm going to go bad on the loan. I'm 55, God willing, I still got, you know, some time ahead of me, but once I go bad on the loan, you know what happens? You know, I screw up my credit, screw up some of my future, thank God I'm pretty stable now, but you always need your credit and so forth. I don't care, just get this back to my lawyer, because I have no respect to him. His days are numbered, okay? You know, we're doing depositions, you know, and I argue them all the time, because he originally wanted to depose all of you, because I think one of you made fun of him, and, you know, he didn't like that, so, you know, he took it out on you guys, and we'll have to do depositions, and I fight, why you depose them? You know, go after the people that put me in this position. Now again, I don't believe anyone did this intentionally, but I'll say again, if this is corporate America, things will be different, okay? You know, it's hard for me to stand up here and be critical of anyone, anyone. You've always shown me respect from the beginning. I'm a lawyer guy, so I will never go against, you know, the respect that you showing me. Mr. Evans, you know, we know each other, we used to be Maro, I don't know, I can't say it again, you know, my child, my family, we've had a lot of love for you, always did, always will. You know, Mr. Kelly, I mean, oh, you doc, I mean, I'm just dumbfounded that I'm up here still, okay? And I don't care what I say, I don't care what gets back to my lawyer, but, you know, you have an ordinance that you guys passed, Mayor Scarpelli, you signed it, I think you initiated, right? Part of it talks about the duties of administrator, which is Sal for our, who also, you know, have a lot of, it's happened to me, because Sal's daughter, my daughter, our roommates have love. I love my nephew because of my house. I wish I didn't love all these people. Maybe I could, you know, be a little more angry, but I can't. You sign an ordinance, and it clearly states in the ordinance that the flood administrator duty is to whether or not to recognize that a parcel isn't a floodway. I mean, it's written out. I don't get it's written out, right? I know I'm pressed for time, but, you know, I got the construction permit, Dave Barry, when I originally submitted my plans, submitted foot and foundation plan, I got an email submitting saying move forward, do the electrical, do the plumbing, I got the affordable housing residential development fee calculation given by the township. I guess you're more familiar with the code fee. I'm not sure if all of you are, but it's a fee that you have to pay when you build a new home. I got the FEMA report with the township. I got, I mean, I got the survey with an email from your town engineer telling me he wanted me to update the survey, or from Dave Barry. I got the report. when I originally submitted my plans, submit foot and, and foundation plan, I got an email submitting saying move forward, do the electrical, do the plumbing. I got the, the affordable housing residential development fee calculation given by the township. I guess you're more familiar with the code fee. I'm not sure if all of you are, but it's a fee that you have to pay when you build a new home. I got the FEMA report with the township. I got, I mean, I got the survey with an email from your town engineer telling me he wanted me to update the survey or from Dave Barry. I got the report from your township engineer telling me, once again, this is approved for one family, right, right at the top? This is approved for one family home. Your township engineer told me to do X, Y, and Z, okay? Changed my plans. I know I'm reiterating everything, but I just, again, I'm dumbfounded that with all this, you guys aren't even working with me. I'm not telling you assume the full responsibility. You know, I heard about the Green Acres grants and so forth. I mean, throw a little bit this way. I mean, you guys were elected to make the decisions for the township. I'm not here saying, Maro, come on, man, you know, remember back in the good days? Al, come on, we're Belleville people. Dr. Scarpelli, I was your patient, you know, Mayor Kelly, you know, I'm not, I'm not here doing that. I never did that. I never came to you, Al, and putting you on the spot and asking you to do something. I'm asking you, as the powers of this town, to recognize this. I mean, how much more, listen, I'm going to prevail in court, God willing, or I truly believe I'll prevail, okay? But again, there's no end in sight. So, you know, if I got away another two years, I can't pay this anymore. It's, I want to tell you how much I swear to God. And I've said this a thousand times, if I sat in that seat or sat in that seat and this was your son and daughter, all of you would have reached out to me and said, Nikki, come on, you got to help my son and daughter. The township did them wrong. And again, I never, never blasted the township employees, I never called disparaging remarks. They made a mistake. Everyone made a mistake. I cannot emphasize again that prior to all this, I went to the town. Louis Latack went to the town. Carl Lord, I went to the town, all before I closed on it. I did my due diligence. The township let me down a path of no return. And I don't care what they tell you now, because I lost faith in certain people. If they're telling me they told me, show me one email, one email, one full message that them tell me that you can't build on spot. Do any of you really think it's your department? Hopefully you know the procedures of building. Do any of you think that they would make me go through all this knowing that it's an unbuildable lot? It doesn't even make sense. I walk in, I want to build a house. If they knew that house, that lot was unbuildable, they would say, Mr. Oriema, sorry, you can't build on this lot. Know why? I tell you why. I don't care what I reveal, because I've had people that want to buy the lot, makes sense. And, you know, I, sure, as is. I would never sell to them. I think Rinaldi would tell you that because you could listen to conversations against my better judgment of my conscience, I would never hurt someone like I've been hurt. But when they go to the town, ironically, now they all find out you can't build on this lot. Now meanwhile, no one told me that and I know anyone. I know David, I know Carl, I know Sal, I know Ante that, I know them all. You don't think that they knew this lot was unbuildable, they would have told me that? Come on, guys, it's common sense. We all made, they made a mistake. I just don't understand why none of you could just, you know, do the right thing, put a pocket card. You know, I'm not looking for the full amount, I'm two hundred and seventy thousand plus. I just want this loan paid for. I just don't understand, like, you guys keep on saying you're helping me. Have you done anything for me?
Mr. Oriema, the entire board certainly empathizes with, with your situation. And like I've said in the past, these legal matters, they certainly take a lot of time, more time than most people would like. And my understanding from my last update with the attorney was that new parties have been added, which kind of adds a little bit more time to that. But what I will say is that, you know, I will, we will continue to have a conversation with our attorney to see if we can't move this at an more expedited pace, to see if we can't find an amicable resolution to this situation, especially now given your current personal situation. We'll see if we can get something moving, get something going in terms of an amicable resolution to this matter.
And Mayor, I appreciate that language.
I've been here this whole two years. I mean, it's the same thing. I leave and no, like, I mean, I, I don't get it. I mean, I mean, I'm here as, as a citizen, I have the right to speak and I think you have the right to, you know, you want to respond, like, Al, not to call you out, but come on, have motion.
Yeah, cool. You know, you've sat on these boards and we've had many discussions, right? And I wish I had a magic wand for you and I'll keep saying that, but I don't want to be at a turn. I think in my own opinion, my commissioner, she, if you're changing your lawyer, I think that's a win for you. Because, you know what, from the things that you have told me and that we discussed, I mean, I think that would be a step in the right direction because we want to help you, Nick. And it's, and this is a correction, I'm from Nutley, not, oh, you said us Belleville guys, I grew up in Nutley, but whatever.
You still got a little Belleville.
Yeah.
That smile.
But seriously speaking, you know, I mean, Jonathan, you and I've talked, Jonathan met with you a hundred times, you know, you know, we're all friends up here, we all want to do something because it's the right thing to do. But listen, not to cut me off, I think you're heading in the right direction for, for once. Go find a lawyer that could represent you properly because in my opinion, I don't think he has.
It's nothing about, well, being friends and knowing each other, okay? Let's set that aside. I think I would have gone further with this if I didn't know anyone, okay? Here's OSHA first bank. Here's what I owe. I'm done, I'm not paying for it. So when I file the substitution of attorney, which is coming, and I don't care if you're, I know John Farrar called him up and he told, John told him, I call him a weasel, he's a weasel, not John, my lawyer, because he has no background. He does a lot of barking, you know? He doesn't like you. You know, he barks, 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 you know? But, you know, you know, he's, you know, once I get my depositions done, I'm not a lawyer, okay? I'm not spending another thirty, forty thousand on a lawyer. So guess what? I'm, I'm going to be pro se. And when I am, I'll be able to talk to you and you and you. But as a citizen, like, why, why is so difficult for you guys just to purchase this for a minimum fee? You know, I'm glad no one comes here because I'm not grandstanding, okay? I'm here because some people don't even take my calls, they work, not even hello, text, you know? So it's like-
Not the personal, it's like, you know, do you think that, you know, we have represented up here?
Think that I want to have to go to court and say, oh, you're friends with Nikki and this is what you said and this and that?
Not about friendship, I'm sorry.
No, well, forget the friendship, right? But if you weren't my friend, you wouldn't have my cell phone number either.
You're right.
Right? So you are my friend and you're everybody's friend, but the thing that you have to understand is that, you know what, there's a process, Nick, and I think you're moving in the right direction. Do what you said. Jonathan, can you, Jonathan, is there anything that you could comment about or?
Listen, he's represented, it's, we've had this discussion, it would be improper. I advise all of you guys not to talk about this because there's pending litigation. It's unfortunate, everyone empathizes with you. You know, if, I am always happy and free to speak to anyone with the permission of their attorney, but we don't have that, you know, right now and I invite you and I continue to invite you, whenever you want to have a substantive meeting about the strengths and weaknesses of the case, we have always extended that, that oath.
You know, I, I served, you know, years ago and I'm sorry, you know, I think, you know, my short tenure, my reputation was pretty good and, and honestly, when I ran, no one supported me. Everyone, you're not going to win, but I was old school politics, I ran, supposed to be the top vote getter, when everyone said no, because I went out and I served the people. I didn't care your color, your creed and so forth. You know, if I could go back and pull the tapes, you know, from the meetings when, you know, we were about to not have a budget, I'm like, no, we stay here all night. That's, that's what we were elected to do. I made choices back then and I know some of them, every time you cast a vote, if you say yes, you're upset to no. You say no, you're upset to yes, people. But guess what I did was right. I just can't comprehend with everything I have, how you guys don't see that the township made a mistake. And I'm not putting a full blame on them. I have no respect for the landlord, the seller, okay? I mean, the tile, but of all people, can you do your part? It's just, like, I just, when I leave, what are you going to talk about? Like-
I think Mr. Bruno made a good suggestion, go back to your attorney, let's have a sit down conversation with, with our attorneys, with your attorneys and we could talk about the strengths and weaknesses and see if we can't come to a conclusion regarding this matter. If you are going to go pro se, you know, that kind of certainly will allow us to talk more freely with you about the strengths and weaknesses of this matter and see if we can't bring this to an amicable conclusion.
The township wants to offer me five thousand dollars. That is-
That's never been part of any discussion that anyone's-
Well, that, that's, that's because I have, that's, this leads me to, I can't, I have no respect for my attorney. You know, everyone's all bells and whistles and hugs when, you know, they want to represent you, they want to take your initial fee, okay, your retainer, okay? You know, I knew off the bat the first week when he said, well, like, fail me. Buddy, I chose you because I could have easily gone to someone local, which I should have, who have better relationships with you and make this work. I chose an outsider purposely so I didn't have to do this, okay? That was a mistake, okay? I wanted to choose someone in town, but I said, I'm not doing that to you, I'm not doing that to you, I'm not doing that to you. No disrespect, I didn't really know you that well and you, I don't, I didn't, you know, I know you, but not like these two.
Right, yeah, so, I mean, I don't think it would have mattered who you went to, that we're going to do whatever is in the best interest for the town and listen to our attorney. But like I, like I said, like Mr. Bruno said, we're willing to sit down with you, talk about the strengths and weaknesses, reach out to your attorney, have him set up a meeting through, through our counsel and we're happy to sit down and have a conversation about, you know, where the strengths and weaknesses are and where we can reach an amicable resolution to this.
Again, he serves in the best interest of you guys. However, you guys are the bosses, okay? I mean, I wish, you know, some of you have seen this paperwork, okay? I just don't see how you can't just say, listen, this kid got hurt, just, you know, let's give him our part and let's get out of this case. I mean, you're going to spend forty, fifty thousand legal bills, another fifty, you would have paid off my loan. Tucci, any comments? Come on, Maro.
There's, I know you a long time, Nick. I know your entire family. Despite what you may or may not think, because I don't answer you, I can't answer you on the advice of our attorney, all right? If it's you and I having a conversation about Ohio State and Notre Dame or what we're going to eat on Sunday, then fine, I can't talk to you about this case. Your attorney doesn't like me because I repeated something that someone else said about him not being a great attorney. So, so be it. I don't care if he likes me or not. That, that, that's neither here nor there. But from what I'm hearing and what I've witnessed, your biggest problem is your attorney, all right? From what I've heard in the past, all right, and we can't get into details, but there were several different options that were put on the table. Now, I don't know where the obstacles are, I'm not a lawyer, all right? But there's nobody here that doesn't want to help, just that there are impediments and I don't know if it's personalities, I don't know if it's representation or a little bit of each, but it's just, it's not happening. And it's not that anybody wants to not speak to you or ignore you, you're a great guy, Nick. And, and listen, it's, as hard as it is for you, it's equally as hard for us to listen to what's going on and we know what's going on with you and we don't want you to be hurt financially, physically, mentally or anyway. I mean, and as, when we get something that we can deal with, I think we're, we've always been prepared to deal with it.
Right, and I do want to say that we all do feel for you, we do empathize for you, we do want to come to a solution, but we're in an interesting predicament too, because let's say we actually did do exactly as you say, buy you out, give you the hundred percent that you're looking for. We also have to answer to the rest of the taxpayers in Nutley and the residents in Nutley and we have to be able to clearly and concisely say why we did what we did. And right now, there's, it's not as clear as we would like.
It doesn't get any clearer. I mean, it doesn't get any clearer.
And we're hap-
Your township engineer told me it's a builder, I was directed by Dave Barry, who goes to township engineer, and Sal Farah. How much clearer can it get when they tell me?
And as Mr. Bruno suggested, we're happy to talk about exactly what those issues are and what our position is and what we see and we're happy to hear you out as to what your position is and see if we can't come to some sort of agreement as to what the effects are.
Mr. Oriema, I'm going to cut everybody off because I think we're going down a bad road here. That conversation has never happened.
Which one?
The substantive conversation about the case. It has never happened for whatever reason. That's a conversation we're always willing to have.
About what, settlement agreement?
About the case.
You know, this is, this really like, it's comical because, you know, I guess what I'm going to do again, I'm going to send an email and I'm going to put you both in again. I don't care who deals that means, my, I don't care. I'm sending an email tomorrow, not, you know, surprise you, saying, I wanted, you know, he forbids me to come here. I'm a citizen, okay? I have the right to speak and guess what? I can show you case law that you have to, you, you can answer me right now, but I'm not trying to override, Mr. Bruno. Again, I thanked you from day one. So I'm, I'm not a guy that, you know, goes, people that have been good to me, I'm a loyal guy. If anything, and my friends will tell you, I'm a loyal guy. So I'm not going to change my lawyer to, on you because things aren't going well. But it makes me wonder, I'm going to be honest with you, because my lawyer says, these guys don't like you, Nikki. I don't know why and how. I don't know what, you, you don't even, other than, you know, I mean, I'm like, but it makes me wonder, Maro, like, this is two and a half years. Two hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Nobody up here is a mind reader. We can't tell you why people may say certain things. We continue to be available to have real conversations about the town.
So when I, I'm going to send an email and-
When you send that email, make sure you CC your counsel.
Yes, I know. And he's sending out papers, he doesn't want me involved in anything because if I don't, you know, push things, you know, he doesn't do things. Like I said, he didn't file motions at time, he told me he was in courtroom following this case, only for me to follow up, the document number he never filed. So I have a whole problem with him, but the problems I'm stuck with, if I, but Maro, listen, I know some people think I'm rich, okay? I have limited funds still, I have three kids, you know, I got two in college, it's not, I don't, I'm not poor, but I'm sure so can't give away two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. I don't think anyone is, maybe you are, in a position to give up two hundred and seventy thousand, maybe you too, it's probably you too. And you, what am I saying? And you. I'm the poor person in here. I don't know what you do for a living, Mr. Evans, but-
I'm retired.
Well, then maybe you're not, okay? I'm going to send an email tonight and he could cry all he wants, okay? And then I'm going to say, can we please set up, I'm on a conference call, all of us? And just say, and during the conference call, we're going to, I'm going to ask for a settlement. But save my, save my energy right now. If you're going to come back with five thousand dollars, then, because that's what he said you guys offered me, five thousand. Come on, guys, man. Listen, someday, there's a good chance when you all retire, I'm going to be up there, okay? And the reason why I ran the first time, because people hurt, and I, I truly believe my heart, no one here is intentionally trying to hurt me. But I also believe you guys are the powers that be, you have a lot more pull than you have, not that you realize, you know what you can do, what you can't do. And I'm just dumbfounded that two and a half years later, they're still there.
Jonathan keeps telling us not to talk, but I just have to say this one thing to you, because you're bright and I know you probably the loneliest about anybody here. The common denominator, denominator is, and you say it yourself, is your attorney. Come on, man, like, you know, you could, you could stay here, we could laugh, Joe, we could watch you cry, but it's you that keeps telling us what the problem is. You're bright. It's your problem, so we can help you.
Well, again-
Want to make it clear, you have an attorney, you're well represented, he advocates for you strongly. It would not matter who your attorney is, you have expressed your personal feelings about that, do it that way you will.
I don't know how he advocates for me. I mean, that's, that's, I guess a matter of opinion. But I will, I will wait till I have the depositions and I'll decide what to do and I will file substitute of attorney and hopefully at least on this end, we could talk and you guys could see this and say, listen, come on, this kid got let down a road, a road, you know? This kid got let down a road, you know? Again, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oriema. I don't see anyone else here this evening for public comment. We do have a need for executive, all right, Mr. Bruno?
Yes, Mayor, to, uh, litigation.
Thank you. Accept the motion.
Second.
Whereas section eight of the Open Public Meeting Act, chapter two thirty-one, public law nineteen seventy-five permits the exclusion of the public from meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas the public is of the opinion that such circumstances exist and whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex and State of New Jersey desires to proceed to close executive session and now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, move into closed executive session to discuss litigation.
And as well as contract negotiations as well.
Be it further resolved that at the time when such discussions may be disclosed to the public shall be when and such disclosures may be made without adversely affecting the Township of Nutley, pending and or anticipated legal personnel contractual matters and other matters within the exceptions provided for by statute. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako. Mayor Kelly.
Aye. And we won't be conducting any more business this evening. Our next meeting will be February fourth at seven P M. and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako. Commissioner Petrako.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Good night, everyone. Aye.
The time is eight fourteen.